Okay, let's call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Duper.
Here.
Councilman Papezcu. Mayor Pro tempore Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
Thank you.
Sounds like we have a quorum. There was no closed session. I will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro tempore Leonard. Please stand.
Father heaven, we thank you once again for your love for us, your watch, care, and guidance over us. We pray your presence in this meeting, your blessings will be with us, that the decisions we come to will be the ones that are beneficial for this community and for these people in your name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, but Mr. Mayor, I would like to move item four from the consent calendar to the new business after item five, please.
Okay. We'll do it that way. Now is the time for oral reports from the public. We have three requests, and I will read them off in order. First is Christine Scott, SoCal Gas Update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Christine Scott, Public Affairs Manager with the Southern California Gas Company. Just want to bring your attention to an item that's currently going on in the state right now. For the past under 50 years, SoCal Gas has been distributing safe and reliable natural gas to residents of Loma Linda, allowing them to warm their home, have hot water, cook meals, and dry clothes efficiently. The employers in your city also rely on natural gas to cook meals at restaurants, pump water, and many other industrial applications. Natural gas is affordable, abundant, and the energy source of choice in homes and businesses. It is part of a balanced energy portfolio. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, which the residents of your city and, in fact, all of California enjoy and want. California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass legislative in 2018 would have required all new buildings built after 2022 to be all electric.
Excuse me. Can you slow down and enunciate what you're saying?
I'm sorry. I'm just been, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I should know better.
Thank you.
Since California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, which all of California enjoys and wants, they want to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass legislative in 2018 would have required all new buildings built after 2022 to be all electric and required existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all electric by 2030. While this proposal did not pass, you can be assured that more similar proposals will be coming. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in the summer and how relatively low you pay for natural gas to heat your home in the winter. Imagine paying even higher electric bills year-round because you are forced to heat with electricity, cook with electricity, and do everything else you-
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I've got, I've got slides that I think we're supposed to be looking at.
No, this is actually a public comment-
I have no clue where you are on the slides or what you're saying. So I apologize. That's probably my limitation, not yours.
Well, she's not, she's not agendized, so she can't do a slideshow unless it's within three minutes.
Right. And actually, at the end of my speech, I was gonna say that I have some materials to accompany with additional information as well as my contact information. So I am not following a PowerPoint presentation right now. I'm just kinda doing some talking points. And basically, what it is, is that there's some proposals going on last year, and there will be more down the road about the fact that they want to, proposal of electrifying everything, including current homes. So imagine everything you do right now with natural gas having to do with electricity. So what we just want to do is educate and inform some of our residents, letting them know that people think this won't happen, but there are some proposals out there that are suggesting it because, obviously, they want to lower greenhouse gas emissions, which is great. We're not against electrification. People want to use electric, all go electric. That's their choice. They have a choice. So what we're saying, let's keep this part of a balanced energy portfolio. When the wind doesn't shine, when the sun doesn't shine, the wind doesn't blow, you're using natural gas. So we're just saying, keep it diverse. Don't put all your eggs in one basket. Right now, there are emissions being emitted from heavy-duty trucks, so we're suggesting that more incentives to have trucks go from diesel to possibly technologies that's available, which is natural gas right now. Eventually, there'll be also other sources of alternative fuel vehicles. And we're also using renewable natural gas right now. So taking dairies, biogas, so taking the waste from cows and turn it into natural gas to use in our pipelines. If we can use 16% of renewable natural gas in our pipelines, then that's the same as every home in California going all electric. So there's nothing, there's no formal presentation right now. All we're just trying to do is bring this awareness because, again, people don't think that natural gas will be eliminated, but I'm here to tell you that there is some talk about proposing to go all electrification down the road. And so that's all we're doing tonight.
Well, the Green New Deal would eliminate you completely.
Yes, and we are aware of that. And also, California's been leading the way for different kinds of energies. So again, we're just saying it is a diversified portfolio right now, and we'd like to hopefully down the road keep it, not to mention if residents were having to convert all their appliances from natural, from natural gas to electric, it would cost about $7,200 per home in addition to the additional electric fees, those that you would have on a monthly basis.
And I won't cook with an electric stove.
That's the other thing. Eighty-five percent of our customers prefer natural gas to cook with and heat with over other sources of fuels. So the chefs are behind us, and I'm sure if anyone's cooked on an electric stove, they don't like it.
Pete, just a thought. I don't know where we're at on the, on the tour, but you should talk about the anabolic digestion facility down there that our trash company has.
Yeah, yeah.
It actually, that's, I mean-
It's adding to your gas supply.
It's adding to your pipeline.
Yeah.
You know all that, but I just think that's a, that's a really cool thing. We went down, toured it last year, and it was really very impressive, so.
We did also just work on a contract in Riverside with a waste company as well, and hopefully, we'll be taking some tours down the way to show this is where it's coming from, and this is how we're feeling it in our pipelines. Again, if 16% of our fuel comes from renewable natural gas, then it's the same. And to us, it seems more reasonable than having to have everyone go all-electric. And again, taking away that choice from our customers as well as affordability.
I think you're safe with this city and council, so.
We'll see. Again, if you want additional information, if you want an electric copy of that PowerPoint, I'm happy to send it to you.
Thank you. Do you want to ask?
I just-
We don't usually interact a whole lot, but-
No, nothing to do with you. This is actually, just to come in. Our audio system in here is way, either way too loud, or it's just, I just feel like I'm having a hard time hearing people because it's too loud.
Well, it's, it's very basic.
I have no clue what you just described to us.
Yeah.
I, I have a handout, but you talk so fast and so convincingly, I have no idea what you just said.
Well, I'm happy to do a one-on-one with you.
So, you know, we can, we can chalk that up to my limited cognitive ability, but I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not trying to put you down. I appreciate the fact you came in here this evening, but, you know, I've got this. Here, Christine? Yeah. I don't, I don't know what you said compared to what the, this is. So I cannot and will not advocate to the citizens of Loma Linda when I don't even know what the heck's going on. So I believe that, that, uh, um, natural gas has a lot of benefits and a lot of potential that we have not realized yet. You did not help me understand that any better. So I, I apologize. I'm not trying to put you down, but I have no clue what we just went through.
It's hard to put all that down. Three minutes, again, it was just public comment, just some information, and I'd be happy to do a one-on-one with you.
Yeah, it's kinda like the-
All right, maybe that's the problem.
The really fast part at the end of a drug commercial, like, blah, 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 blah. But that's okay. We know where to go for the, for the main content.
It wasn't that bad. We, I think we understood.
Okay.
What is the take-home message from what you just said?
The take-home message-
What, what, what can I tell my neighbor about what you just said?
That the state wants to take away your choice and-
They, who's "they"?
The state.
The state wants to take away our choice for?
For our, our heating, our, our choices in how we heat our homes and how we use natural gas. They want to take our choice away from us. And so we're saying, customers love and prefer natural gas.
You know, in all honesty, I think you need to come back up here to the mic so that people that are in my neighborhood will know what you're saying.
Sure. Sorry, public comment, I wasn't used to going back up, so.
Well, it's, I think the problem is it's all about the base, and there's no treble.
I also will stand back a little bit, too, so.
That's fine.
Is that better?
Hopefully, we'll find out.
Okay, so takeaway is, the state wants to take away our choice in the way we heat our homes, and customers prefer natural gas. And so the takeaway here is, we are alerting customers that there is a possibility that their choice is being taken away from them, one, and two, it's affordability. Natural gas is affordable. And so if you take it away-
What's the incentive for the state to take that option away from us?
Taking the low-hanging fruit and helping lower greenhouse gas emissions, which is important, and we're not saying we're against electrification. What we're saying is, don't take away customers' choice. Natural gas is affordable, and there are other ways that we can lower greenhouse gas emissions, including renewable natural gas, as well as more alternative fuel incentives when it comes to heavy-duty trucks.
Heavy-duty trucks.
Mm-hmm. So the trucks that are carrying the goods along the 10 freeway from the ports to America, they're using, 80% of the emissions is coming from those heavy-duty diesel trucks. So what we're advocating for is lower emissions or more alternatives when it comes to those trucks. There's natural gas engines available right now, which will lower the emissions by 80%. As well as down the road, more technology will be available, including electric trucks.
So when my neighbors talk with me, what should I tell them about this initiative?
There isn't a specific bill yet, but that there is information, and there are things coming down the pipeline, no pun intended, that will take away their natural gas choices from them. And so we just want customers to be aware that this is coming down, and that when there are some proposals of legislation down the road, we will be bringing this back to them. So one, we just want to make them aware the fact that everyone loves, I shouldn't say everyone, but most of our customers enjoy their gas bill. It's their lowest utility bill they have to pay. And so we just want them to be aware of the fact that that is being threatened, and they are, their choice in how they feel their homes are also being threatened right now.
So essentially, you're saying there are some people who believe that they would like to take electricity to replace the evil fossil fuels that are being burned, and they're replacing with electricity that is generated by dirtier fossil fuels, or fuels like coal and oil, that create the energy, and they're just telling you, you have to do this. It's kinda crazy.
And natural gas. It takes about 62% of natural gas to generate electricity at the power plants.
Yeah, and their, but their plan is to electrify all of the blank spaces between cities with solar and wind. So once they get all of that, then they're all clean sources supposedly, but like she mentioned-
And again, when the wind doesn't blow, sun doesn't shine.
Yeah, exactly. You know, they don't have, they don't have any means of, of saving the electricity for the nighttime consumption, for example.
You're gonna burn more energy picking up all the dead animals that fly into the wind rotors and get fried by the solar panels.
And again, we're not against electrification. All we're just saying is, it's a balanced energy portfolio right now. Let's just keep it that way, and we're trying to bring in more renewable natural gas to help offset some of those emissions. Again, it's cleaner, and it could help make a difference versus everyone going all-electric.
So when I go back to my neighborhood, which is a very active neighborhood, I mean, they hold my feet to the fire, what's the take-home message I need to provide for them?
Again-
Because they've got electricity, they've got natural gas. What's the take-home message?
The take-home message is, is that, again, your choice in the way you're feeling your home is being threatened right now.
The, the choice in what?
The choice in feeling your home and the way we heat our homes.
Feeling my home?
Energizing your home.
Yeah.
Is, is, is being threatened right now. Again, maybe threatens a big word, but again, I'm more than happy to, to further have a discussion with you. Again, this was public comment, so I'm more than happy to set up a meeting and further go over that PowerPoint with you, because, again, there is a little bit more to that PowerPoint, as you can see into the presentation, and this was only just an attempt just to do in kind of a brief three minutes and just letting you know we will be keeping you updated as this more information follows, but it was just a briefing introduction tonight.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, Dick Wiley is next.
So this is only a-
It's just a comment. She's just taking the opportunity to comment on a non-agendized item. My summary would be, global warming forces are trying to eliminate all fossil fuels. And she's just warning that that's a problem.
Since your politics and my talk politics don't always align, then let that ask questions.
But that's why, that's why I would, yeah, that's why I would say the summary is, global warming people are trying to take away fossil fuels. And that's the summary. And whether you like that or not, that's the summary. Go ahead, Dick.
Thank you. The council and staff. I hope I'm able to stand here long enough so that the, the state doesn't take my pants, so I'll be lucky. I'd like to thank Jarb and staff. We're over there watching them clean up the Adobe today, the last two days, and they, that crew is good. They are doing a good, quick job, and I appreciate that. You know, first you start looking at it, cut it up, and you start to see through there, and it means a lot. I think it's gonna improve things. I know, I was over there Monday, and Joe and I were looking at some of that. This guy comes by with his bicycle, mountain bike, and I think it was one of the homeless back in the Grove. He walked by and said hi to us. And then Joe left, and I was on the phone. This other guy walks by, and he's got his, it looked like a little iPad or something like that, and on the top of it, here's a, a beer can, a big tall can, and he said, "When was the last time you were at Bruce's?" Bruce? And I figured, you know, he's been drinking a little too much, you know? So I played his game. So I think it was about four, six months ago, and he heads off back down the Grove. This is all within a half hour, the two of these come through. But that just lets you know that there is a lot of traffic from the homeless going through there. And I think this will really improve that situation of cutting it down, keeping them away from the house, which is good. I know, they were saying, no, you've got them for another, I think it's three days. And very impressive, the guys were very nice. You know, I talked to a couple of them and said, "Are we allowed to take pictures?" "Yeah." Anybody that didn't want to be in the picture, get behind the, the crew van. And they were very happy that somebody, you know, appreciated the work they did. But again, thanks to you, and I know it takes a lot of work to get to this point, but, you know, it's been, what, 11 years or so? We're starting to move. So thank you.
Thank you. The next comment is by Joe Frank.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, City Staff. I just have a couple of things. I want to thank you all for Jarb and Conrad for taking the initiative and getting a crew out there so quick. I didn't think it was gonna be this quick. First few dry days we had, and they did do a great job. I was down there today, and I talked to a couple of your employees, Al and Bob, good guys, and Jim, the fire crew chief that was handling the inmate crew, and a couple of the inmates, and they, they were nice fellows. Anyway, I appreciate that. Probably didn't want me down there bugging them, but I didn't really bug them. I suggested a couple of things, and that's it. I didn't, didn't demand anything, but I just wondered what promoted this so quickly? It wasn't just me doing this. Was it something you guys had planned in the works, or, or later on? Or can you answer that, or?
Well, the, you know, it took a long time to arrange, finance for, for this project, first of all. Second, it took a long time to have a contract with West Coast Arbor to come out, remove the tree and trim the trees. And also, it took a long time to get the Cal Fire Crew to come out today. So this has been in the works for, like, six months.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, sir. So it not just, from last meeting to today, it, it took a lot longer than that.
Well, I, I knew, I know anything the government does, it takes a while, but I just wondered what, what's, what promoted it? Was it something the city council did, or something I did with my supporters? I hope it is something that I've helped to bring along. But anyway, moving right along, do we have a conceptual plan for that park that I can gain a copy of? And what size you guys are thinking about?
No, sir.
Do you, do you want us to come up with something?
No, because right now, like I mentioned at the last city council meeting, the PowerPoint, the property is within the RDA.
Right.
Property that eventually we have to sell it. But as part of the condition of approval, eventually, we're gonna put in the condition of whoever purchased the property to have to preserve that, correct me if I'm wrong, Conrad.
Yes.
Preserve that and, and hopefully use it as a museum.
Right.
So what, what we are doing, Conrad and I are doing, is that you want to make sure that before the, the property get out our hand, we at least seal up the property and the building so that it's in a good shape before somebody take it over. That's all.
Okay. I, I noticed in the paper the other day that Governor Newsom is going to start another RDA. It's gonna be called something else, but it, it's infrastructure. I, I was gonna bring an article and got a phone call when I was walking out and forgot it, but it was in the, some paper in the editorial part, last week, I believe. Anyway, and I don't know how it's gonna affect that. It may not. It may be going after something else. I guess that's about all I have, other than I want to say, "Mr. Duper, I take exception with your lecture you gave me last week. I'm 72 years old, I've been to Vietnam, I'm a veteran, and I don't want to be lectured. I don't mind to discuss something with you, but don't lecture me about how grateful I should be on you guys taking initiative in the Adobe. You guys should be taking an initiative in the Adobe whether I'm here or not. It's in your sphere of influence. You own it, so you guys should be the ones heading this all up without any input from me, whether I was dead or alive." So that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to item, oh, is there anybody else? This is your chance. Three minutes of fame. Okay, then we move to item number one. I will open the Housing Authority Board, and we'll have a joint meeting with the city council regarding our mid-year budget review.
Okay, tell me if I'm speaking too loud into the speaker. This is the mid-year mayor council members. This is the mid-year budget review. We presented the review to the Budget Committee on February 7th. Just waiting for the slide to come up. So I'm just gonna do a brief overview, kinda keep it pretty simple. You guys heard all the, the information for the most part, and I'm just, this summarizes the changes that we're proposing, both to revenue and expenditure by funds. So here, you'll see the general fund is the first-line item, and it's what's called the unassigned fund balance. And so we are, these are the changes we are proposing. So we're proposing to add 2.2 million in revenue, and then we're gonna add 2.7 million in expenditures. So this will affect fund balance by that half a million dollars for the general fund, unassigned fund balance. And then as, as we go through, I, we group the category of enterprise funds, and so you'll see the changes here for the sewer, the LLC, which is the Connected Communities, and then the water funds. And I will go through each of these by fund in a little bit further detail in a couple of slides, but here, we just want to highlight the changes ultimately to the fund balances in these accounts. So, and here we have the enterprise capital funds, which are fees collected from developers, and then expenditures for infrastructure improvements. We have special revenues, which are for, like, gas tax and grants, what, gas tax is really the main one, and public safety tax. And then we have debt service, which we just have some interest earnings that are increasing on the revenue side. The grants, we did receive a small grant, and so we are adding a few expenditures. Capital projects, which are the bulk of our development funds, so we're adding some revenues. We adjusted the revenues. There are some increases and decreases. Many increases are interest revenue, and then we adjusted the development revenues downward a little bit for some of them because of, we're seeing some delay in projects. So we'll be realizing the revenue probably more next year for those, those developments coming online. And then we are doing some capital projects in some of those funds, mainly the Parks Fund. So overall, in the general fund, the changes to the revenue, we're adding for property tax. We're seeing more property tax as far as the residual receipts that we're receiving from the former RDA through the successor agency. So that's the change here. As one of the taxing agencies, we're getting more property taxes there. Franchise fees, we're receiving more revenues for, our franchise comes from the refuse service, the gas company, Southern California Edison, and the cable company. Sales tax, we are seeing an increase of almost a million for fuel increases through the major fuel vendor here in town, and then construction going on at the medical center. License and permits, we are seeing some increase in permits on the front end. We're seeing increases to the fire permits at this point. Later on down the road, we'll see increases to the building permits. The use of money and property is our-
Can you be a little more specific, licenses and permits?
Correct.
Help me understand that.
We have business license that we collect for the businesses here in town. And then permits, these ones that we're seeing the increase are for fire. When a building project is proposed, they have to submit their plans and have them reviewed by the fire department. And then there's, there's also public works permits for the grading of projects and stuff. So those are these types of permits that, which is mainly due to building going on in the community.
So how, if in any way, this relates to the new Medical Center Children's Hospital project?
This part, these permits are not related. We don't collect for the medical center. Those are through, Conrad, can you?
So what licenses and permits are we talking about?
The, this is for, for example, for the engineering and public works, where people want to come in and pull permit for grading, for building.
Okay.
This is the building permit.
So like KB Homes?
Correct. KB Home, Lennar Home- Correct. KB Home, Leonard Home, this is the permit.
Okay.
But what happened with the hospital...
So there are no licenses and permits related to the new medical center?
The reason that we don't do permit for the hospital on the building itself, because it's under the state. We don't inspect the state, the hospital, check the state.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is portion, it's only an increase in what we have money budgeted as a revenue. This is an increase at the mid-year, from what we initially budgeted at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, so use of money and property, basically, it's interest earning.
What happened to fines and forfeits?
There's a small decrease. There is a state mandate fee that we collect for, on the business license, and we see that that's actually per license, so it's actually down.
Per business license?
Yes, business license.
And that's down because?
That means there's less business license, because it's per business license that you collect this fee, so that's why...
So there are fewer businesses seeking a business license in the city?
Correct.
Well, that doesn't sound so good. Okay.
So that's just, but our business license in town are based upon gross receipt, so there could be existing businesses that are doing much better. So our business license could actually be higher.
Okay.
Then the use of money and property, that's basically interest earnings on our investments, and because life is actually, the interest rates are higher, we're seeing that increase there. Intergovernmental, that's actually a public safety grant that we're receiving for for our disaster preparedness. Charges and services, this is where quite a few of these are related to building. So we're seeing some charges and services. Actually, it's for planning, engineering, inspection and plan checks, refuse services, EMS response fees, and miscellaneous services.
And so what kind of businesses are we talking about? Are we talking about housing and development, or more than that?
For the planning and engineering inspections, it's mainly the housing that we're seeing right now for Leonard Homes and KB Homes that came in.
Yeah. So that's the primary source of the revenue?
For these types of, the planning and engineering.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Councilman Daley? In the staff report, there's a detail, line by line, of exactly, just to let you know...
So you're gonna show me up, because I haven't read everything, line by line.
I just wanted to let you know that there's a detail, yes, sir.
Okay.
One way to cover this in greater detail is to attend the Budget Committee, right?
I didn't get an invitation.
No, because right now, no, because it's only the mayor and councilmen purpose you, if you three of you didn't make a quorum, so that's why, that's why it's only two of you. It's a bunch of subcommittee.
That ain't gonna work. You know that.
Well, then I won't say anything. You can talk.
But, yeah.
Okay, so then on other, other revenues, we are, it's for overhead charges to capital projects and enterprise funds, and then we have the operating...
That's a lot of money. Help me understand it. Other, $480,000.
Ron, these are just the changes. This is in addition to the regular budget that they projected at the beginning of the year.
Got it, got it.
That's a lot of money.
Got it.
So when we calculate overhead, it's based upon, it's a percentage of the expenditures, and it applies to the enterprise funds, as well as like the capital project fund, which are development funds. When we do the budget, we do it based upon the budget, but then as we introduce, if Jarb proposes a new project in a capital fund, or in the sewer fund or water fund, which there's some in, there's a water line that was proposed and approved, we don't generally come back and adjust the overhead till the mid-year. So this is where we're adjusting the overhead for those projects that are either added through appropriations that have been presented prior, or at this point. So that's why it takes a big jump at the mid-year, if those projects are added.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then operating transfers in, we're actually reducing this. We get gas tax from the state, and they actually are projecting the revenue to be lower by this amount, and then we transfer that many into the general fund to fund road improvements in the general fund. So we're adjusting it per the state projections. Wow. So overall, we are adding 2.2 million to the general fund revenue at this time. And these are all the other funds. So we have the enterprise funds, and then the other ones, which are mainly the capital improvements, your special projects, your... And across the board, like I said, we're seeing interest earnings improve, so we're adjusting all the interest earnings based upon the lay rate, which is actually almost like, almost double. So we are seeing interest earnings come up. Charges for services in sewer, based upon the Loma Linda charges for service on the sewer. The LLC CP, we are seeing with the development coming in, the network certification, revenue's increasing, and then some miscellaneous increases. And then the water fund, again, the charges for services here, it's not necessarily the billing that we do every monthly. We're actually seeing these on the development activity, which we invoice separately. So when a developer uses water through a fire line or special meter, we bill them separately. So this is where we're seeing the charges for services increase. And then, like I said, we adjusted all the other funds for the capital projects, based upon our projected development income. And then, so we have some the special revenue. We have decrease in the gas tax, but we also had an increase in what's called the Measure I. It's a special Measure I that is basically what Jarb's using to fund the widening of California at Redlands. So we got additional funding. So it's showing just a slight increase of 16,200, but that's a combination of the decrease in the gas tax that was 100,000, and then the increase in the Measure I funding. So the next big one is the capital projects, and that's an increase in the interest, and then the decrease combined with the decrease in development fees. So overall, citywide, we are adding 2.4 million to our overall city revenues. This is the general fund expenditure changes. So these are, again, just the changes. I put them by department, and I'll just go over the bigger ones. In finance, we are adding the 49,000, which is for attempt, that we are trying to implement in our new software, and do some cleanup prior to the implementation, and then as we go through the implementation. So we have a part-time person that's actually started today. The next big one is general government. So the big increases there is for the economic incentive programs that we have. So where, if there's sales, they get a rebate back from sales tax, and also the TOT tax, and those items are in this number here. We also had, we also have the settlement with PERS that was recently agreed to for final agreement. And then we do have, Jarb has put some Christmas decoration replacements. The next big one is for our fire rescue. Again, these are unanticipated payouts of retirement costs. So we had a few retirements in our fire division, so they have their leave payouts. There was some overlap in overtime for the fire marshal position, and then we have workers' comp and strike team reimbursements that we, we don't budget those ahead of time, so as they occur, we then come back at mid-year and adjust the expenditure side of it. Also, we had a TC, a traffic accident for one of the trucks, so we're adjusting the expenditure to get that repaired, and then we also adjusted on the revenue side for the insurance claim reimbursement. So those are some of the big-ticket items in the fire service.
Was that insurance from the other car, or?
We are lucky it is not insured, so we'd have to sue them to get it.
We were not...
That may not...
We'll probably wanna put that on the next agenda for closed session to discuss authorization. And we should know what's happening with the JPIA uninsured motorist coverage, if it exists.
The next big items are for street services in the 55,000. Some of these, they may not be big, but we're just highlighting them, because this is what Jarb, Jarb's doing in the community. So he's, we're gonna be doing additional tree trimming, then sidewalk and street maintenance, and then there's gonna be some additional repairs for vehicles and stuff that they have. We're also...
Do we get a tax deduction if we fill some potholes in San Bernardino, like a charitable contribution?
I don't know about that. I'm sure Jarb would love to.
There's one at the corner of Waterman and Barton. That thing is permanently potholed.
And we are doing some, at Civic, the Civic Center, that we'll be replacing some air conditioning units, additional tree trimming at the Civic Center, and then they'll be doing some brick and sidewalk improvements here at City Hall. For, let's see, for the parks, we will be seeing some, Jarb's planning on doing some replacement of the trash cans citywide at the parks, and a lot of these. And then the other big ones, let me go to the other funds. So as far as general fund, we're gonna be doing about 2.7 million in improvements and additional costs. Like we said, the highlight was the general government for the incentives. Then we're gonna be doing some sewer improvements, some LLC CP, where there were some hardware requests. The main big one in water is for some, some chlorination system replacements, which for two wells, and then the Richardson Treatment Plant. Here's where you'll see the decrease in the gas tax, which is gonna be the transfer out as well in the gas tax fund, and then the traffic impact, the park fund is that, that's where you'll see the, Jarb's doing the trash cans and some playground improvements.
So question, Jarb, I have no context for this. I have no reason to argue with it, but these are all within the anticipated ranges of change that we would see?
Yes, sir. And the item that you, the city council requested and asked for, like a trash can, and I think now is time, we have extra money, so I would like to purchase a lot of them to replace the trash can at the city park, and so we add at the mid-year.
Okay, okay. But these are all within the ranges of what you would anticipate in terms of changes in expenditures?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I look at this line by line, and we submit this to the Budget Committee, and they grill me from line by line. So we went, oh, this is very close, sir.
And then the only other kind of significant increase is in the Housing Authority. This is for the program costs for transferring a property to the Mary Erickson Organization. So overall, we're increasing expenditures by 3.4 million citywide. Are there any questions that I can? So, yeah, summary, just by fund. So this is our general fund, and we have all the categories here. So we have the unassigned, assigned, and committed. So this shows the change from when we started the year to when we're ending the year, and the bulk of the decrease really is we made the large payment to PERS for the unfunded liability. So you can see that we still have 4.8 million in unassigned, and then we still have the assigned, which is our equipment replacement reserve of 1.2 million. And then we have committed reserve, which is our rainy day fund of 2 million. So we still have 8.1 million in general fund, fund balance. And then this just shows the totals by other fund categories. So we have the enterprise funds, again, 2.6 millions for all the enterprise funds. We have the enterprise capital funds, which is our sewer, and then our water enterprise capital funds to do water infrastructure. So we have 3.6 million, and then all the other fund types. So total citywide, we have 36.1 million in our funds.
So in conclusion, for under general fund, yes, we're gonna be in the year with an estimate of half a million dollar over the budget. But again, every year, we never spend all the money that we plan to spend, and so we always end up with a surplus. So right now, at mid-year, it looked like we are at deficit of half a million, but by the end of the year, I think we'll be okay.
So we are requesting that you approve the increases in the appropriations, and then the decrease in revenues. Increases in revenue. There's a typo in here. So...
Does, by accounting principles, does our contribution to PERS count as deficit spending?
Well, accounting-wise, in the enterprise funds, we record the full accrual, so the full accrual of our unfunded liability is stated in our statements.
So it balances?
But in the general fund, it's more a pay, it's a modified accrual, so you don't do the long-term. But that's coming down the road with the new pronouncements that are coming through GASB, that you will be recording the unfunded liability, more like a full accrual. But currently, it's not a full accrual on the general governmental funds.
Currently, it's not what?
A full accrual.
Oh, okay.
So it's kinda like you pay it. It's still an expenditure in the current period that you pay it out of the general fund types.
Yeah, so it looks like we had a deficit this year, because GASB has not yet recognized
The full liability on the liability.
Our bottom line is not affected by, yet by, our unfunded liability. And then it would be offset if it were...
Yeah, which is different for the enterprise funds, because they run like a business, like a full accrual business. So we do carry the full liability of their allocation of the unfunded liability. So it's just a paydown of the unfunded liability.
So the reason I'm asking is because if I want to brag that the entire time I've been on the city council, we've never had a budget deficit at the end of the year, we've never had a deficit spending year. Am I correct morally? Or it sounds like I'm not correct from an accounting perspective, but morally? Or, it sounds like I'm not correct from an accounting perspective, but morally, I am correct.
We're not going into the negative.
Yeah.
We've, we've been adding to our fund balance annually. So, now we're just using that reserve to pay down our liability, so.
So, it's not deficit, it's not deficit spending then?
If you take a range of years, no.
Well, I'm still going to claim it. I absolve all of you.
I, I'm not sure what we just decided here, but the mayor has a smile on his face. So, I think that means he's up for reelection and he'll be in good shape. What is our status? Because I sit in multiple meetings. What is our status with PERS compared to other agencies and cities?
I, I want to let you know that I attend the, the city manager meeting in this county once a month. And I brought this up at one of our monthly meetings. I said, oh, by the way, have you been attending CalPERS workshop? And, and a lot of people said, no, because every year, the, the city get the statement from CalPERS. And this past, I think it was three months ago, they have a workshop right here in, in Palm Springs that I attend. And so, before I went, I asked the city manager that, hey, you plan to attend this? Nobody noticed it's happening. So, the short answer is, right now, they just ignore the, this, all the unfunded liability. And so, it's just like, it's just like credit card, why would they just pay the minimum? Whereas for us, we just pay about almost 60% of our credit card debt paid out by, by 60%. So, we are doing very good compared to other agency within this county.
Compared to other cities and agencies that are PERS-dependent, we're in good shape.
We still have debt, but we, we do better.
No, I understand.
Yes.
Everybody has debt to PERS. But, but we look good compared to most of our fellow cities or agencies. I, I mean, I've.
I'm not bragging.
Interested in this, so.
Yes, yes, yes.
The mayor and I were talking about this today. We might be completely paid off in a couple of years. The problem is, is if the whole system goes belly up, that doesn't put us in a good position either way. But, but we'll be the only ones to claim we don't have any liability. So, there's, there's the moral answer on that one.
No, that's fair. As long as Trump doesn't take it over, we're fine.
I think if Trump took it, I mean, we would be fine.
I don't want Trump taking over our retirement fund. The feds should keep their fingers out of it and so should the state considering their track record.
I agree, I agree. Very good report. Thank you.
Yes, and to answer Council, or Mayor Prot temporary Lennart's question, what the recommendation is, staff recommends that the city council approve the net increase in appropriations of 3.4 million and change and decreases to revenue of 2.4 million and change as presented.
That's actually a typo there. It should be the increase in revenue as well.
Okay.
With the corrections noted, I will move the, the move action.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job. I'm, I'm impressed.
Again, I would thank you, the staff too. This is a team effort, so, and so, thank you.
Another fine performance. We're getting, we're coming to expect it.
You, you know she's got a fine performance when she has a mic that actually reaches her mouth.
Yes.
If, if, if the mic is halfway below her mouth, then you don't know what's going on.
Exactly.
No, good job, thank you.
Okay, next is our consent calendar, which currently consists of only items two and three. Four has been pulled. Okay, there's a motion, a second, is there discussion?
Is there going to be discussion on number four?
Yes, it's after item five in new business. It's been moved. So, there's a motion on two and three, any further discussion? Any further discussion on two and three? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Now, we'll move to new business, item number five, designation of delegate and alternate for SCAG.
Now, what, what happened to number four on the consent calendar?
It's after five. It was moved to after five at the time of the item, items to be added or deleted.
Okay, it's not on my agenda, but okay.
Correct, it was changed.
I have confidence in the mayor, so it's okay.
It was changed.
Okay.
So, we need to designate a delegate and alternate. This is usually Jarb.
I'm looking for a volunteer, I didn't mean. But May, May first to May third in, in.
Oh, boy.
Happy to be an alternate to Councilman Duper, sir.
Well, I think, I don't think it requires a vote. We can just say, you're it. Do we have to vote?
You can do that by consensus?
Yes, I think there's a consensus that we'll keep it the way it has been in the past. Okay, then there's item four.
Do you have a conflict?
Oh, yes, that's right. This was pulled because it has a conflictual aspect.
Yes, if you recall, we've had four in the past who declared a conflict of interest, Councilman Daly. However, has not received income from his former employment, nor has his wife in the last 12 months. Therefore, we have determined that his conflict no longer applies. So, he will participate along with Councilman Duper. The other three, I will present the straws for your selection.
And there will be only one vote straw of the three. It's one minute.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, this is for the ratification of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolitions of four, four structures on the southwest corner of Redlands Boulevard and Anderson Street. Right now, you can identify them as the station, the thrift shop, BK Subs, and the old car wash behind there. The city ordinance requires, or, the, any building over 50 years, go to the historic commission to be approved for demolition to verify that it's not of a significant historic or, or preservation nature. In the review, it was determined that one of the structures, BK Subs, is only 48 years old. So, it, it's exempt from this and doesn't necessarily have to be ratified. So, the site.
Can you go to the former slide? It says public hearing at the top. Is that an informal designation? Because it's not agenda as, as a, as a public hearing.
It is not, it, no, that's a misprint.
So, it's an error, okay. Thank you.
You're just going to have to ratify it. I think it's left over from the historic commission where we copied and pasted. So, the site is Redlands Boulevard and Anderson. It's five, five parcels, four buildings. Some of the buildings straddle some of the parcels. The commercial, it's commercial zoned and it's in the EVC, general commercial zoning area. All except the BK Subs are currently vacant or underutilized. And the surrounding areas, Commercial, Del Taco Bakers, kind of that, that main entrance gateway into the city, which we actually witness.
Can you describe the five parcels? I see the red lines.
So, it's to the.
Not a lot of sense to me.
Where's, where's the pointer?
Oh, you stole it, bro. And unless something changed in the last day, I would not say any of them are vacant.
What's that?
They're not vacant.
The, the, the station is vacant, this is underutilized, this isn't really utilized.
Relive is where I drop off all of my donations. And I've been doing it for years. And it is definitely full and not vacant. And the station is used for other things. I'm, I'm not saying it's not used all, I'm not saying it's used all the time, but it is used for other things. And I just washed my car there about a week ago.
We are, we are corrected.
So, anyway, for what it's worth.
So, the five, the five parcels, the one that the, the station is on, the one that BK is on, and then the, the car wash straddles the one on the bottom, and then the relive. Kind of a weird shape there.
When, when were these parcels drawn up? It makes no sense, David.
It makes no sense based on what we have now. Because you've got, you've got lines right down the middle of existing businesses.
Have no idea.
So, so this goes back to.
Somewhere between Lewis and Clark and today. I, I, it's, I have no idea.
That used to be a Union 76 station, didn't it?
That's, that, that's why it's called the station. And this used to be a drive-through dairy.
And that was the dairy.
That was a dairy.
Many dairies, yes. Lots of time at the dairy.
And, and because the university at that time owned all five parcel, they just built on it, even though it's crossed over the parcel line.
This is more than 50 years old. So, back then, they really didn't care that much about crossing parcel lines as long as there was a common owner.
And there was no city. It was county when that happened.
So, I really don't know.
And, no, it, sorry, we're derailing you.
That's all right.
The questions aren't relevant, but of interest.
So.
It's, it's going down memory lane.
Which we did in the historic commission too. So, there was a discussion several years ago with the, with the university about what, what should happen there and what, what's going on. And actually, as a joke, one of the answers was, maybe we should just have it as a vacant field and tear everything down. It may look better than what's actually there. And that kind of cycled back around as the, the legitimate solution. So.
Is, is this proposed or just fantasy?
This is proposed. So, as.
On the corner?
Yes. So, this, this wall would be kind of right there. So, the initials, and this, this is partially driven by the new hospital and, and the work on campus with signage, with everything else going on. It's an ability to kind of make a nicer gateway and a nicer entrance to the city. And, and the University of the Medical Center has put a lot of effort into this the last year or so because, because of the new building. So, the original, the original step or first step is, is to remove this, get this area cleaned out. You know, stub off the utilities, get a field. And then we're kind of looking at a little bit of an isometric, but you're on the corner, Redlands, Anderson, with a little bit of a hill and a block wall. Technically, we can't put a sign on there, but what they paint on their block wall is their business. So, we're, we're allowing.
You lost me there. Technically, we can't put a sign up.
It's, yeah, but.
That seems to be a pretty critical element.
Well, it's a block, it's a block wall and what they paint on their wall is their business. So, it'll be something integrated into the wall. But, the idea is, is that we'll have some, some wayfinding, some monumentation that lets you know that we're coming into the university area, into Loma Linda. And the idea is to have some planting, some grass in the front, and then a small orchard in the back that they're planning on fencing off and keeping as kind of a demonstration garden for the public health and the nutrition people. So, what we're looking for from you is the ratification of certificate of appropriateness, that it is appropriate to tear down those four structures and that they have no important historical significance to the city.
I see the applicant is out here.
And we've got the applicant here if you have questions.
What's that?
We have the applicant if you have questions.
Yeah, I do have questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen and the staff. What, what questions can I answer?
It's hard for me to believe that this is a permanent fix. I have no objection to it, that we have a sign and some, some appropriate flowers and trees and so forth. But I don't believe that's what we're talking about over the long term. I want to know what, what the university or Loma Linda Health plans over the long term. Because there's a lot more property there than there is what will, what will take up this sign and, and so forth.
And that's.
And I've heard motel, I've heard, I've heard all kinds of things over the years. So, I want to know, what is the master plan for this corner?
Right now, the master plan hasn't defined a specific building or usage. What we've identified in the master planning committee is that the corner is rather blight.
Is what?
Blight, as it attracts trouble.
I agree.
It's very unattractive. Not only does it impact what we're trying to do with the building, the new medical center and it being the gateway, but it also impacts the city as well. So, the thought is, let's clean up the corner, let's convert it back to open space. And, and until we could come up with the, until we submit for a conditional use permit to repurpose the land, that could be 10 years down the road, it could be 20 years down the road, depending on funding and as the organization grows, what usage we might need. So, for right now, the way we design this with the wall on the front is that, that would be more of a permanent fixture. And that.
So, let me ask you. So, on, if we're looking at the right-hand side.
Yes.
The sign and trees and so forth. On the left is Anderson, on the right is Redlands Boulevard?
That's correct. And then, and then the far back, you'd have the parking lot that we supply parking for OmniTrans.
The parking, park and ride.
Yes.
The 115 spots with no more than five ever filled.
Exactly. So, so the whole point here is that we.
Thank you, Ron.
So, so, the whole, the whole point here is that we, we want to improve the city. We also want to improve the gateway leading into the campus. In the last, I've been in the last couple of master planning committee meetings and I have not heard anything as far as specific usage. So, our first step is to try to clean up the corner, convert it to open space, which I think is, is a benefit to everybody. And then down the road, when we decide to build something, we would be back at city council again because we'd have to submit for a conditional use permit in defining what we want to use that land for. And at that point, we would take all the pieces of the parcels and we would probably assemble them all into one parcel at that time. So, this is kind of a phasing approach. And through that phasing approach, we could clean up the corner. And, and like I said, we would probably always keep the corner gateway leading into the medical center and the campus, possibly repurpose the back area. And in the meantime, you know, the, the concept was putting in a grove there is, is something that, that's historic and that, you know, oranges used to grow here. They would probably plant dwarf trees. And then we would, if, if we went with a grove, we would enclose them just because we don't want homeless camping out in the groves. Otherwise, we'd have to consider something that was more low, low-lying. And so, this, this is something that everybody received very well in master planning. If it wasn't a grove, it would be something related to that. So, the, the concept is open space, something that, that's kind of, that promotes health. And that was.
Yeah, yeah. So, what's wrong with the sub shop? That could fit behind the trees with no problem.
BK Subs.
Well, the thought is, is to clean up the entire corner. So, I, I think what they were wanting to do was to just really get rid of a bunch of overtime old buildings just for aesthetic reasons. And also, once the other buildings are gone, you're just left with one building kind of back off the corner. So, and right now, we're really not generating much revenue from that building. So, the thought is, is to, to clear everything out. And it would be a phasing approach, so it. And it would be a phasing approach, so it, it, it's, we originally proposed the three buildings, but then master planning was receptive to adding the thrift shop. And so, we're not saying that everything's going to come down overnight, but we would, uh, we're, we're basically going to start off with the station and then move ourself back to the next as funding allows in order to re...
So, this would be a staged, uh...
Yes.
Transition.
It would be a transition. So, first take down the buildings, then, you know, level it out and then start putting in the landscaping and everything. So, i- it, it would be a phased approach.
And what's the, what's the timetable on this?
I don't have an exact timetable on it yet. Um, of course, we...
You understand that worries me.
Yes. Well, I, I can tell you that, right now, I, I have a, a budget to take down the substation. So, that would be our first approach, is to take down the building where, uh, right now, there's a lot of vandalism that goes on there and there's a lot of...
At the substation?
The gas... Gas station.
Oh, gas, gas station.
Yes. So, so the first, the first stage is to take the first corner building.
Have the tanks already been pulled out of there?
The tanks were pulled out about twelve years ago. So, that's already been done. And we do have an environmental report on it, so everything is...
So, Relive is aware of this?
Uh, yeah, um, so I, I did speak with one of the representatives the other day, and I told them, when, when we get to that point, that they would be given plenty of notice. So, uh, like I said, we don't have a timetable for that building. But, but in talking to Conrad, we wanted to get a certificate of occupancy for the entire corner because we don't want to have to come back in two or three years for another building. We thought it would be more appropriate to give you the, the general plan.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, so what you're talking about is pulling out the, the old Seventy-Six station and putting this in. But I'm not clear on what the timetable is for BK subs or the car wash or, or Phil Duper's, uh, garbage.
Yes, I, I don't have a timetable for the, I don't have a timetable for the other buildings.
Because I go buy some of his trash. I mean, this guy's... You could just come to my house and it saved you the trip. Yeah, well, there you go. So, so we're talking about initially just pulling out the, the old Seventy-Six station?
Yes, that, that's the first phase. And, and so, uh, but in...
But, but when is the rest of it? Because, I mean, that, that candidly, in terms of, of aesthetics for the city?
Mm-hmm.
That's important to me.
Yeah. Do you have any, um, suggestions?
Yeah, pull it all out at one time.
Pull it all out at one time.
Yeah. Because, um, I, I mean, I'm not going to make a huge deal out of it. I, I'm one councilman. But, but, um, when we, when we cut the, the tail of the dog off, one little piece at a time, I have a problem with it. Let's figure out what the goal is and then pursue it aggressively. Now, that's, you know, I mean, I'm one of three, so I don't control this. But I'm just saying that if we keep kind of fiddling around with it, it's going to look worse, not better.
Let me do this. Let me, let me go talk to them, help them push a little bit.
You'll talk with who?
Work with them and push them to tear it all down, to tear it all down.
Okay, okay. We better hear from, from Councilman Duper though, because he keeps dumping stuff off at the Relive.
He needs a garbage can.
I, I, I understa-
Can I still drop my stuff off there?
Just as a, as a reminder, the only item before you tonight...
What's that?
Is, the only item before you tonight is the, uh, ratification of the historical commission's approval of the certificate of appropriateness, so...
Upon ratification, that, that clears the way.
It, it's the first step. It, it, it removes a historical issue, but they still have to go through any normal procedures to get demolition permits and, and to get approvals for any future uses.
Those demolition permits wouldn't come back to us. So, this is, this is in a sense, an, an opportunity.
It, it's your opportunity to preserve the, those structures if you choose, uh, to make findings to do so.
For their beauty or whatever else.
Historic significance.
I mean, because one of the challenges you have with me, and, and I'm transparent. I've heard so many different plans about exits off the freeway that will go up, uh, around by the canal and dump into, uh, Barton and come around. I've heard all kinds of stuff over the years, and then nothing really happens. And, and what I'm looking for, from the city perspective, is that, is that we commit to a plan and then make it work. As opposed to kind of piddle along and we'll pull the station out, we'll put some plants in and a sign, and then we've got BK subs, and well, eventually that's going to come out. And then I go down to wash my car one day, and then suddenly that's not there. I, I, it, that, that's the part I'm, I'm, I'm needing to understand. I'm not saying it's not a good, you know, to transition is not good. But, um, I don't like to piddle around. I like to figure out, what is the vision and let's go for it.
But I think what the attorney said is that that's, that's to be decided at a later date. This is just, this is just ratifying that we don't think there're...
And that's the issue I have.
Yeah. No, but...
Who knows when the later date is?
No, but our process, not, I'm not talking about the university's desires or sequencing. I'm talking about the fact that we're not even giving them a permit to tear anything down. All we're saying is, from our perspective, they're not historically significant enough to block that. That's all we do tonight, right? That's it. So, the sequencing and all that is a later meeting.
What does that mean? It, it means at some point in the next twenty years, they can pull those buildings down.
No, I think what it means, I think what it means is, we have the opportunity tonight to block this plan. And if we don't block it, then it will progress through a means that we don't have any control over. So, your, your desires, I think, are, are good, but we, it's not up for our decision tonight to, to enact or not enact what you're, what you're suggesting. All we're doing is either permitting the historical significance to be insufficient to res- to preserve them or reversing that decision and saying, my goodness, you can't tear down the dairy.
So, my challenge is with the dairy, although it's really not the dairy the way we remember it. But, um, I'm okay with all of this. I don't really have a challenge with it, other than, um, I do like to point out what the obvious is, and those other things, like the permits to tear down buildings, are not things that come in front of the council. So, in a sense, whatever we do tonight opens it up, and that will all go through without ever coming back to us. So, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we hold this up or anything, but I'm just pointing out that if one of us here actually did have a real concern, this is the opportunity to slow that down and the last opportunity that we will have is a council. Um, but other than that, I, I'm not really in a sense opposed to it. There's some philosophical argument that, you know, really it's, it's their property and I, I don't, I don't like to stand in the way of that. That goes against my conservative nature, so, um, and I understand the brand. No, not liberal nature, no, not at all.
Classical liberal.
Um, not at all. Anyway, in a, so, anyway, I guess I, I would be good with it, at least that's where I stand.
And, and we, we hear you loud and clear that we should be applying pressure to the university to make sure that this happens in an expeditious manner, not, rather than being dragged out over twenty years.
Right.
So, we, we will work with them to, you know, to, to push that. And, you know, I told you, when we started it, four, five, three, four years ago, this started as a joke with what would look good there. And, you know, the joke was, is nothing would look better than what's there now. So, at least we're working towards nothing. And, um, we, we will work with them a, as much as we can to at least get to nothing.
And, and that's a very fair comment. Um, I guess my concern is that, uh, uh, if we've been talking about that for half a dozen years, I'm worried it's going to take another half a dozen years before we really move forward with a specific plan. That's my concern. I, I support, I agree with, with, uh, Councilman Duper. I support what you're proposing here tonight. That's not my issue. My issue is all of the uncertainty that's out there. And, and I would like some commitment as to what is that corner going to look like in the next ten years? That's what I'm looking for. It doesn't have to be tomorrow. It doesn't have to be in the next two or three years. But I want some kind of a commitment from the university and, and, and Loma Linda Health about, okay, we do this. That could sit there for the next twenty years. I, I mean, I've lived here a long time now. I know that could sit there for the next twenty years and have weeds grown this high among all that stuff. And, and so my concern is, let's identify a, a, a long-term plan. Long-term meaning ten years. And say, in ten years, here's what it's going to look like. We're going to have a Ritz-Carlton hotel, or we're going to have, you know, the, the mayor's house, or we're going to have whatever it is on that corner. But that we make some kind of a commitment as opposed to saying, we're going to rip a bunch of stuff out and put this stuff up, which looks good now, but it'll have weeds in a year, I guarantee it.
That's his big concern right there. You know that, right?
And Jarb and I have this...
Gerhart probably contests that, but I, I understand your, Jarb, um, um, Gerhart, the, the landscape, uh...
Yeah, well, that doesn't make me feel any better.
Well, if the...
At all. It doesn't make me feel any better.
If the microphone ever came to me, I was going to ask, what's the budget for the weed control? But, but I think, yeah, I think unless, unless you're willing to move that this thing be declared a historically significant property and stop what's going on or table the, the item for further discussion, then the appropriate motion is to approve the ratification of the certificate of appropriateness to demolish.
And I, I very much appreciate the mayor's quest for efficiency. And closure, I do. But, um, I've been around the block a few times, and if we just leave this open-ended, I don't have any confidence it's going to do anything good for our city. It, short-term, yes. Long-term, no. I don't believe it. So, that's my concern. And, and so if the university or Loma Linda Health can come back and say, five years from now, ten years from now, here's what we're committed to, that intersect, what that intersection will look like, that makes sense. Short of that, I can't support this. Because you, you've, you've pulled some old buildings out and you've put some landscaping in with a sign. And I'm, I have no problem with that. I'm fully supportive of it. Where does it go from there? That's my concern. And, and I don't know how I can back off from that because I ha- I do not have confidence that, I, I, I mean, if, if we're serious about improving the, uh, entrance to Loma Linda Health, that improves the city. We're all working on the same, same thing. This is step one. I want to know what step two and step three are. And, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I really don't. So, if, if you see it differently, please help me, help me understand that.
I, I understand your, your concern. Um, I, I can go back to the next master planning committee meeting to see if, if, if they have, uh, a little bit more of a vision and a, and a timeframe. Um, I can't speak for them in that I haven't been given specifics as far as the entire project. Um, but I do know, just in conversation, that I, I don't see this project taking ten years. I, I think I could say that with, with confidence.
Good, good.
Is there, is there any thought about, in, just curiosity, short-term, about like maybe parking or something down there with like a shuttle service? And the only reason the mayor almost started to hit on a little bit, and again, I'm, I'm good with this. I'm no, no opposition, but I am just a little worried that if we level everything and we have vacant lot, that it will grow weeds and it will grow tra- collect trash, you know, just the stuff that gets discarded. Not the stuff I'm going to drop off, by the way, just for clarity. But, you know, the stuff that comes out of car windows and stuff like that.
We have the same problem on Mountain View right now, by the way.
Okay.
Off-ramp, on-ramp, and on Mountain View. We've got weeds. We've got a serious weed problem.
So, I'm not advocating building or anything right away or forcing any master plan, but I don't know if there's a way to, I, I don't know, some type of use where it makes finance, financial sense, but that just can kind of prevent the...
Well, my question, going, going down that line, my question is, when, let's say, as far as you know, because you're not, you clearly don't have the full master plan, you know, at your disposal right now. Is the plan to take out the gas station and then put in the front half of this landscaping? And then take out another building and put in the back half, or is it going to be a rubble pile? You know, for ten years or, you know, d- d- does it, does it seem to you that this thing, you have to finish taking out all the buildings before you put in this?
Well, one, one approach could be if, if we decided not to take out all the buildings at one time.
Yeah.
And, and we had talked about this with Conrad and Jarb, is doing the front corner with the gas station, and we could put a row of trees behind the wall. And then we, and, so, we, we could do the front corner, put a row of trees behind the wall that blocks the other buildings, and then kind of stagger it that way. In other words, we, we would, and, and keep in mind, when, when I do a demo permit, uh, what, uh, Conrad is requesting of me is, is a landscaping plan and, and, and a drainage plan and, and things like that. So, when, when we submit to the city, we will have, uh, some type of plan in place for the first phase that makes sense.
What I, what I see as driving this, and it, and it, to me, it makes a hundred percent sense, I'm, again, totally good with it, is in anticipation of the grand opening and the dedication and all that, it's really kind of beautifying and, and it's, it's a branding and it's, and I totally get that. So, even, even putting up, even putting up the wall and the, not calling it signage, but the wall with the, you know, specific markings.
Architectural detail.
Architectural detail. It, it, it would kind of stand out with some of those old ugly buildings back behind it, and it doesn't really serve the purpose. So, my guess is they're going to want, again, and it totally makes sense, they want to kind of clean that whole corner up. So, I'm not worried that they won't do that. I think that'll happen.
And, and since I'm assigned to the project, I will be going back to master planning on this. And as, as I get support and Jarb will be invited to, uh, those meetings as, as, as he feels fit, um, I'll, I'll report back to city council on what we're doing with it, if, if, if that gives you some comfort and, and, or confidence in, in what we're doing. Because, uh, I'll, I'll work with Jarb and, and Conrad, um, when we go back to plan, uh, master planning.
If, if, and if, uh, again, I think all three of us are supportive of what you're proposing. I don't think that's the issue. The issue for me is what's the timetable and what are the plans for the next subsequent two years, three years, five years? Out, absolutely outside ten years. Um, and, and again, I don't want to be skeptical, but I'm skeptical. Uh, and so if, if Loma Linda Health is willing to commit to enhancing, and whatever design you guys choose, that's not up to the city. Our, our decision is, is it enhancing or not enhancing? But if you guys are, are, are willing to commit to a timetable and plan to enhance that whole corner, I'm the first guy to vote for it. It, it's, it's when we say, we're going to start gradually tearing stuff out and we're going to put this up. And, and there's their, there's the risk of weeds and overgrowth, which is a very real issue in our city. It's, it's a current issue. So, yeah, I'm, I'm worried about that.
I, I...
But, but if we, if we can look at it a little bit and say, here's where we're going, I, I don't think you'll have any issue with the city.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I might throw out there that under our, uh, historic preservation ordinance, upon issuance of a certificate of appropriateness, the applicant has twelve months to obtain permits to do the construction or demolition in this case, or the certificate expires. Uh, there could be a one-year extension on that if approved by the...
So, is it two-year max?
That moves things a lot.
But, but what does that mean? But, but what does that mean? I don't know what that means. It means that they have to put this up within twelve months.
No, they have to take the buildings down.
No, they would have to do the demolition work.
Of all the buildings?
Yes, everything that's covered by the certificate.
Okay.
So there's your timeline.
And, and what about planning beyond that?
Uh, that's outside of the scope of the historic preservation ordinance.
Yeah, and that's where my concern is.
The, I would also point out that if we were to deny the certificate of appropriateness, it would have to be based upon findings set forth in the code. We'd have to go back and rework some findings, that we'd have to have support in the record justifying, uh, preservation of the structures. Uh, and those findings would not in any way relate to the future use that, that you're concerned about, so it's-
Which is not an issue with our discussion tonight.
Correct. We're limited to the scope of whether or not these structures should be preserved for the future. If we did make findings saying that we wanna preserve them because of this, 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 if we later came back to, to develop a different project on that site, we would then have to go back and overturn in effect our own findings of historic significance.
I don't think we have any more room in Heritage Park for any more buildings, right?
That gas station, gotta save it. No. Uh, my question is, um, what is the vote threshold to pass this thing? Is this two or three?
The, this is a ratification action of-
It's not a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Correct. It, it would be a minute order. I, I don't, I'm sorry. I, I, let me go back to where I was.
So it's a majority of a, of a bare quorum?
Yeah, there isn't a, a, a resolution or ordinance, so it, it would be a majority of the quorum, which is two.
Okay, so my question is, do we have, Ron, do you, are you pleased by the two-year time limit? Enough to vote for it, or should we press ahead for a vote?
So let, let me, let me ask one more question. Um, in terms of the two-year time limit, um-
It's actually a one-year with-
With the renewal.
All right, one year with a renewal.
If the council approves a one-year, so you can hold it until one year.
Yeah. So my question is, is it possible, in the extreme, that, that those buildings would come down within a year, two years at the outside? And we have this kind of an attractive signage and landscaping uh, within that year to two years? And everything else can grow up weeds this high? Is that possible?
Is it possible? Yeah, but then it becomes a code enforcement issue. And it, then we, we have the mechanism for that, and you know-
What's that?
We have the code enforcement mechanism, you know what's involved with that. So is it possible, yeah, that they're gonna have the, the main entrance to their campus with weeds up to the eyeball? It's, it's possible.
I don't think approaching twenty twenty, they're gonna want-
But-
But we've already got weeds up to our waist, at least.
This is weed season, yes. I've got 'em too. Um, but, you know, th- there is a mechanism through the code enforcement process, and it, although it's a slow and painful one and not nearly as satisfying as you like, there is a way to do that, and there's also a way to do that via the, uh, we just did the fire, the fire thing, the, um, weed abatement program.
But what you're telling me is there are no specific plans beyond putting this signage up?
It's not signage. It's-
Well, whatever.
Architectural adornment.
Not at this time, that, that I'm aware.
That's the part that worries me, is there's no plan beyond it. That worries me.
Well, the, the, well, the basic plan is that we know we, we have an eyesore on the corner, and with twenty twenty coming, we, we really do wanna clean it up, and, and ju- just knowing, just with, you know, knowing campus transformation every year needs change, and, you know, it probably won't be long before they, they consider, you know, plans for that corner, but a- at the moment, we don't have anything specific that I know of.
Well, in the, in the interest of moving forward or stopping and, and going on to the next topic, I'm wondering, is there a motion to approve the ratification of the certificate of appropriateness?
So in the absence of any other comment, I'm fully supportive of it. I just wanna see something that takes it to the next level. And I don't think that's unreasonable at all. I think it's entirely reasonable and appropriate for the city to be sure that we have a plan for that intersection. It's a major intersection in our city. And so I don't apologize at all for saying, I think what they're requesting is appropriate. I support it, but I want a little more.
And a two-year limit-
What's that?
A two-year limit is not adequate for that. They have to take down the buildings within two years.
What I just said, Dusty, is I've got no issue with what, with, with what they proposed. I wanna know what, what it's gonna look like in three years, four years or five years. And, and candidly, I think that's what the city needs to be concerned with as well. And, and frankly, I don't think there's gonna be an issue for the university to say, here's what we've got in mind, here's what we're willing to commit to. I don't see why that would be an issue. But in terms of the immediate proposal, I've got no issue with it. It just doesn't go quite far enough.
But the, to me, the item before us is, is this a historically significant set of buildings or not?
I understand, but we're dealing with bureaucratic, uh, stuff now. And, 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 and I have no problem with that. I've said that. I have no issue with that, whatever. And I want the university to move forward. I think it will be in the best interest of the city for them to move forward. But I think it is entirely within the purview and appropriateness of the city to say, what's it gonna look like in three years, four years or five years? So help me understand, from your perspective, what is unreasonable about that?
Well, I, I think, I think it's, um, I don't think it's necessarily unreasonable. It's just that I think that, that the item before us, you know, there are other mechanisms-
You're talking bureaucratic stuff.
No, let me, let me explain, let me explain. There are other mechanisms to get what you're wanting than withholding a certificate of appropriateness to demolish some buildings. That's, that's my position.
So what are those options?
I think it's very reasonable. I think there are other means to do that. Is that-
And, and what are those other means?
Is that true, or, or is holding this thing up the only way to get that?
To force, you're, you're saying to force the Loma Linda Health to come in with plans for that thing for five years from now? I don't think there is a means. And my personal opinion, I think it's gonna look like that five years from now and probably ten years from now.
But if it looks like that, is that a problem?
I, I don't, uh, once again, a personal opinion, and as a resident, I don't have a problem with that ten years from now or twenty years from now. It, it looks good, and when it comes time for something to get built there-
But I think, I think the issue is not whether it's, whether this is going to be there. My question is, do we have any other means to assure that the buildings either come down or that this is, this thing, the time runs out on it, and it stays with the status quo?
We, we have no means to force them in any direction. So you can approve the certificate of appropriateness, and they don't act on it, and then it expires and the building's-
And then the status quo rules.
Status quo, the other option is, is that you can approve the certificate appropriateness, and they do act on it and remove the buildings, and however, don't build that, and we're looking at a vacant lot.
And we don't have any means to force them to build this?
We do not. Other than force them to mow the weeds. Yes.
We can force them to mow the weeds.
Yes, or-
So what was that?
We can force them to mow the weeds.
At, at a curiosity, if, so this certificate applies to all of the structures, correct?
Um, all except BK subs. BK is forty-eight years old or something like that, or forty-seven years old.
So they can do that without the certificate?
That's correct.
Okay. So, s- so if one of the buildings comes down, does that meet the one-year requirement for the other ones?
No, because it's for all four buildings.
So if the gas station comes down, obviously to build the s- not sign, and the other buildings stay up, would they have to come back for another certificate?
They would have to come back for another certificate.
And potentially, they would have to come back for another certificate if they didn't take the BK subs out in two years? Right? 'Cause then all of a sudden, it meets that fifty-year mark.
BK, theo-theoretically, BK would hit the fifty-year mark, and then to, to make a, a wild reach, that would be the last drive-through dairy in the inland empire.
It's not drive-through anymore. They changed it.
Okay, but it's the last-
So it's not even the dairy that they all remember.
The last, the last structure of that type in the inland empire, and now it's historically significant.
There's still one on Redlands Boulevard in Redlands.
I said theoretically.
Yeah.
So that there is a risk that if they're not taking it down, that something changes and they are considered in the new context historical.
So the reality is that the, the pressure is really on them to kinda get this stuff down, because otherwise they have to come back for another certificate, potentially, any, over a year, or an extension, or if one of those other buildings reaches an age, or we find like, uh, desert tortoise or something like that.
Or, or they would just have to come back and explain to Councilman Daley what, what the hell happened, and I'm sure that's gonna be a great conversation.
And, and there'll be other projects that'll come, so-
I'll be in a wheelchair, probably.
I will, um, make a motion to, uh, to approve the certificate.
And I will second.
Okay. Are you telling me that Loma Linda Health has no clue, no foggy idea what they're gonna do with that acre and a half over the next five years?
I'm, I'm not in every master planning committee meeting, so I, I don't know what past conversation has been. I just know that there's nothing specific that, that I know of, just, just in the conversations that, that I was involved with when I presented, uh, this proposal to master-
And all I know is what was floated as a possibility and was shot down because it contained a coffee shop. So that's all I know.
There, there, there have been two commercial projects proposed there in the last ten years.
That's what I've heard. That's what I've heard.
Both of them were shot down because there was an insistence that, um, uh, Loma Linda Health administration have a voice on what type of businesses are allowed to go in there and the developer-
Fair enough. I've got no problem with that. That's fair enough.
And the developer was not willing to do that.
And what?
The developer that was planning on doing this was not willing to concede that, so both of those projects died. Now, if they were to develop it themselves, that's, you know, what goes in there is, is their business. But there have been two projects that, that died because they, they could not find a consensus on how to proceed with it.
Interesting.
So from my perspective, the answer to your question is, no, they don't know what is going to go in there, because that, that kind of indicates that when someone came in with an idea, it was, they needed, they wanted more latitude to do what they wanted than the university was willing to grant them.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
No. And, and just so you know, I am not opposed to this. I am not opposed to this. I am opposed to the short-sighted planning that doesn't take us beyond the next year or two.
And I understand your position.
And, and that just makes, from a strategic planning perspective, which is the world I lived in for a long time, that makes absolutely no sense. It's, it's, it's ma- it's administrative malpractice, from my perspective.
As, as things further develop, I, I'll keep you updated on that.
Say that.
I said, as, as things progress and we have more, um, of an idea of what's gonna happen, um, I'll, I'll, I'll notify you on, on what's going on.
I appreciate it.
'Cause I, 'cause I realize you have a concern about it, and I wanna, I want you to feel, um, that, that you have a, a sense of what's going on and that we are-
Well, I want, I want that intersection to be major and be attractive and to be inviting. And this is a start, but it's only a start.
Understood.
Okay.
For the record, the motion was approved and the item was approved. I just need to-
So I didn't, I didn't bring this up in discussion because I didn't want it to cloud the decision, um, but this is just an after comment. Um, I realize that long-term, the goal is not to have a viable intersection like that or a viable piece of land vacant, so either you're gonna wanna build some building or you're gonna get some, something there that either turns a profit or is benefit to the, to the university, which a hundred percent, I understand. What would be kinda neat, and I'm just throwing this out there, is I know we're not calling it a sign, we're calling artistic rock wall building or whatever it is that Conrad calls it. Um, I think it might be kind of a neat, good-faith kinda partnership thing to maybe even do some city branding. Welcome to the city of Loma Linda, home of Loma Linda University Health, or something like that. Just, just a thought.
I think we can work with them on the architectural details.
This is, this is an opportunity not only to showcase the university, but showcase the city too. And I get it momentarily until something else that, that actually benefits-
There will be something coming at a next city council meeting for the signage, uh, uh-
Yes, and, and we worked really well together, putting together the arrival signs with the branding, and I can bring that concept back to-
Yeah, and I didn't want that to cloud the discussion, 'cause I, that could've taken us in another direction, but just a thought.
That one is coming next month.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. You have been brave and patient. Thank you.
Are there any reports of councilmen?
Did we lose John? Here he is.
He's coming.
Uh, I was just gonna make a couple of comments. In case, uh, those who are watching TV may not know, but, uh, we had the opportunity, myself and, uh, Mayor Riggsby to attend the Loma University Gala this last Thursday?
Children's Hospital.
Children's Hospital, and, uh, it was well-attended. There was probably a thousand people there or so. But what was exciting about it was, sometimes we forget the amazing things that happen at your children's hospital, and there were some amazing stories of kids who were basically brought back from the dead. I mean, it's just absolutely cra- crazy what transpired and the things they've done to put in a new heart in this girl, and, uh, the gala was so successful. I attended it many years ago and had forgotten how successful it's become over the years, but they were able to raise, uh, two-point-one million dollars for the new children's hospital. But I guess the highlight of the evening was when the San Manuel Abandon Mission Indians came in and donated twenty-five million dollars to the new hospital. And that was impressive. I mean, it left everybody shocked, so, um, it just, to me, it's, it's a proud moment to see that there's a lot of goodwill in our community to try to facilitate this amazing hospital. On a different note, I just wanted to, to kinda do a little shout-out, and Dusty and I spend a lot of time together, so he knows where I stand on these things, but I just sometimes wanna praise him a little bit in the sense that he's been assisting me a lot at the airport. We've had a recent election, we've had, uh, a number of new members. Um, I've appreciated his, um, engagement in, uh, educating some of the new members about kinda where we're going, where we've been, that the airport's been through a lot of turmoil, and I just wanted to, uh, show my appreciation for the fact that he's taken the time, a significant amount of time in, um, meeting with the new county supervisor, the new mayor of, uh, San Bernardino, the new mayor of Colton, and all those folks are a critical part of working with us at the airport, which we're a member of, to make sure that it becomes a success. And, uh, lately, we've had a lot of amazing things happen there. We've had, we're working with our, our government, our federal government, that is, military forces, uh, NATO troops. We've got just amazing, crazy stuff going on over there. And, uh, not always, not everything goes smoothly, and we alw- always have to kind of be on our toes to make sure that we do our part to ensure that we provide good service there, because even though the airport is a government entity, it's really, it should be run more like a business. So, um, I'm very appreciative of what Dusty's helped me with, and he's actually gonna be attending some stuff with me, um, in Los Angeles. We're meeting with a delegation from the Middle East, and, um, he's assisted me, obviously, with the new mayor from San Bernardino. He and I, Mayor Valdivia and I spent, uh, quite a few hours yesterday, attended an event in Los Angeles. And what was interesting about that event was, we actually ran into a university person there who was talking to diplomats about utilizing our facilities for, uh, international health. And a lot of people on the LA basin are now starting to know about Loma Linda and the fact that they can provide healthcare, because some of the hospitals, like UCLA and Cedar Sinai, are getting too impacted. So- getting too impacted. So i- it's crazy how airport and hospitals are kind of intermeshed. So, anyway, that was my last little, the little ten bucks, whatever you want to call it. Thank you.
Any other, uh, reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Okay, then the city council is adjourned and we will go back to our housing authority, which was opened earlier. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Seeing none. We already dealt with item number one. Uh, the consent calendar is there for your consideration.
I'll move it.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved. Chair and member reports, hearing none. Reports of officers, hearing none. Were adjourned. Boy, why couldn't we run the first item that quickly? Okay, next is the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Conflict of interest is irrelevant. Any motion on the consent calendar?
Should, can I ask you, oh?
Sure.
I'll stick my nose in. Should we make all the discussion about the Frank Adobe, put that under the successor agency agenda now, or should that still be in the council? I'm just curious.
Well, we didn't open-
It was, it's a good question. Being more facetious than anything.
So is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Just, I guess, a second or just a quick question. We gave our attorney for the successor agency, looks like fourteen hundred dollars. Remind me again, what are they doing for us for that amount?
For the successor agency, the attorney, um, he will review the ROPS and, and then, um, he did attend the first oversight meeting with the county oversight meeting with us. We requested that he attend that with us as well.
Okay. And did you attend that as well?
Yes.
How did that go?
It went rather well.
Okay.
It's quick. They actually requested we get there earlier than our scheduled time because they are moving quickly through the, through the process.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did there seem to be anybody who had a bone to pick about where we were headed?
Not us particularly. The main contention or the question that is being asked is the administrative allowance. Um, a lot of agencies, we get the minimum, but a lot of agencies, they're asking them to justify their allowance and then to try to start bringing it down.
Okay. Okay, was there a second for the consent calendar?
I, I think I made the second. I'll just add, pull that-
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved and we are adjourned. That concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you for attending.